Good evening and welcome to the Roseville City Council Regular Meeting of October 1st, 2025. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask our clerk to please read the roll.
Prior to that, we're going to defer to our city attorney, who will do the readout from our closed session meeting.
Good evening. Council met in closed session this evening with the city attorney and the city's labor negotiators to conference pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 Regarding Employee Organizations, Roseville Police Officers Association, Roseville Firefighters Local 1592. There is no reportable action. The entire council was present and we adjourned at 5:58 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we'll start our roll call. We'll start off with Vice Mayor Albert.
Here.
Councilmember Haudashell.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Rakuchi.
Here.
And Mayor Bernasconi.
Here. Thank you. I would like to request that Kevin Hernandez, the 2025 Sylvia Bassana Community Volunteer Award winner, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to ask our clerk to please announce our meeting procedures.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the City of Roseville City Council meeting. Agendas are available at the end of the staff table to your left or on our city's website. All comments from the public should be directed to our city council and not to any staff member or the audience. All speakers must speak from the podium as this meeting is being recorded tonight. For items appearing on the agenda, all members of the public may address our city council regarding any item that is not listed on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of our city council. Public comment is limited to 25 minutes and each speaker will have three minutes to express their comments. If the time limitation is reached in our first segment, individuals will have a second opportunity at the end of the meeting just prior to council comments to express their comments then again. The Brown Act does prohibit our city council from discussing, debating, or taking action on items that are not listed on tonight's agenda. For those items that are listed on the agenda, the Brown Act allows for the public to comment on all of the items listed on the agenda. Speakers will have five minutes to provide input and that input should be relevant to the items being considered tonight. Time will be monitored and once the red light begins to blink at the podium, we'll request that the speaker please conclude their comments. The city council encourages participation and requests that you please be courteous during the meeting. Lastly, if addressing the city council, please consider stating your name for the record. With that, thank you for being here tonight, for your civic participation, and for being part of City of Roseville. Welcome.
Thank you. We have one presentation this evening for the 2025 Sylvia Bassana Community Volunteer Award, and I'll meet you, Kevin, at the podium.
Thank you all for coming.
This is gonna be fun. I've never seen you nervous. Okay, well, this is really an honor for the council to be able to present you with this, an award, and we'll start off with Councilmember Haudashell. Will you lead us off in your resolution?
Sylvia Bassana was a lifelong resident who exemplified, Roseville resident, who exemplified the meaning of volunteerism. This award is a tribute to her and her lifetime of community service. The annual award recognizes individuals in the Roseville community who display a commitment to community service, serve as role models by inspiring others to make a difference, and who display leadership, excellence in footwear, and integrity through volunteer service.
Our 2025 Sylvia Bassana Community Volunteer of the Year is Kevin Hernandez. Among his many volunteer contributions to the community, Kevin has served as president of Lost But Not Forgotten, supporting over 700 families facing hardship, as well as on the Board of Directors for Feeding the Foothills and the City of Roseville's Parks and Recreation Commission. He is an advocate for small businesses, working closely with the Roseville Area Chamber of Commerce, a mentor to local high school students, and has demonstrated a selfless commitment to community service and a passion for helping others.
Whereas Sylvia Bassana, a Roseville native who epitomized the word volunteer, spent the greater part of her life giving to the community and making a difference through her commitment to serve, and the continuation of her legacy will enhance the Roseville community for years to come. And?
Whereas there is no greater asset to a community than the power of dedicated volunteers who give their time and talents to work tirelessly, behind the scenes, unconditionally, and whereas the impact of one person can be inspirational and far-reaching in benefiting the community. And?
Whereas the Roseville community has benefited from the outstanding volunteerism of Kevin Hernandez through his long and dedicated service with the Roseville Area Chamber of Commerce, Lost But Not Forgotten, and Feeding the Foothills, among other organizations, it's fitting that he be recognized for his efforts. So be it resolved by the city council and the City of Roseville on behalf of the mayor, that Kevin Hernandez be commended as a recipient of the City of Roseville 2025 Sylvia Bassana Community Volunteer Award. Congratulations, Kevin. Thank you for your service. As many of us in the room knew Sylvia, she would be thrilled with this and it being you. So we are very excited. We have a little glass tokens that you can see and enjoy, and then the floor is yours to make any comments.
Are you sure about that?
Yeah.
Ninety seconds.
So my producers at Good Day Sacrament know I don't like to rap very easily when they ask me to, so I wrote some thoughts down. So, good evening. First, I want to say thank you to Councilmember Haudashell, Councilmember Mendoza, Councilmember Rakuchi, Vice Mayor Albert, and Mayor Bernasconi for this incredible recognition and for the leadership and dedication that you show to our community every single day. Krista, this moment means a lot coming from you, just because we go way back, and I'm just really grateful for your friendship and your support and everything you continue to do for our city. So, this past August actually marked 20 years since I moved to Roseville. What was supposed to just be a couple of years here turned into home. It's where I built lasting friendships. Many of my friends are here this evening, so thank you so much. It's where I was able to grow an incredible career, and it's where I've had the privilege to serve on boards like Feeding the Foothills and Lost But Not Forgotten, and I really can't think of better ways to spend my time than giving back through organizations that make such an impact on our city and our community. I never set out to be philanthropic, but when you live in a community like Roseville, it's contagious. There's definitely something in the water here that inspires you to get involved and invest in making our city an even better place to live, work, and do business. I've been fortunate enough to have mentors along the way, like my former City of Roseville Adventure Club Director Monica Anderson, who's here, and my former supervisor Wendy Garrick, who I know many of you, if not all of you know. Wendy really laid the foundation for me to understand the power of nonprofits and what it means to volunteer, as well as lead alongside other volunteers. I'm also really grateful to my current supervisors, Eric and Tracy Denio, and my general manager Adrienne Acosta, for always encouraging me to stay engaged within the community. And finally, as all of you sitting up on the panel right now know, that when you dedicate yourself to community service, it means time away from family, and I'm lucky enough to have my family support me every step of the way. My mom is here right now in front, and she's always in the front row of everything that I do, whether it's accepting an award or tying my shoes. My dad and my sister and her family are hopefully watching the livestream, but again, I'm really deeply just grateful for my family, and I love them so much, and just I'm grateful for every single person, whether they're here tonight or just watching at home or didn't even know this was happening, that half my back. And once again, thank you all so much, City Council. Dom Casey, thank you so much for this recognition. It means a lot.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Am I done?
Yes. You are finished. You're welcome to stay, but we understand if you want to go. So we will continue on with the meeting. Feel free to exit quietly. And thank you for being here. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on now to public comment. Now would be a time for anyone to make a comment on any item that is not on the agenda. We do have two speaker cards here. The first one is from Lauren. We'll take Lauren Meeks-Harris first, and after Lauren, we'll take Jennifer Chapman, and then anyone else who wants to come forward, so.
Good evening, and I just, it's very difficult to follow a gentleman such as Kevin. We were in Leadership Roseville together, so it was a privilege, and I'm surprised he beat the clock. So, anyway, moving forward, I just wanted to talk about bikes on sidewalks. I know it may not seem very large to not only the council but people at home, but if you are a mother or a dog walker, or like I am, an avid walker, almost every day, unfortunately, the last, I'd say, six months, there has either been a scooter or a bicycle, and it's not students. These are people who should know better. I have been taking over our sidewalks, and I do do about probably a few miles here and there. I usually walk from foothills all the way down to Pleasant Grove, and that's a big stretch. I usually walk in between two to four miles, so it's not just one particular neighborhood. And if you noticed, I've also been hello to the library staff downtown. We've been noticing people who've been patrons of the libraries were exiting out. There has been people who have been using us as speed bumps. So, I just thought I'd bring that up, not to rat anybody out, or was wondering on enforcement, but I am looking to just please be mindful, because I'm not the only person on the sidewalk. You're scaring dogs, in some cases, scaring children, and these aren't just regular bikes. These are motorized bikes in some cases. And why is California, as well as the City of Roseville and the county of Placer, spending all this money on having bike lanes if nobody's using them? It makes no sense to me. It's either we pave the road and make sure that there's enough room for cars, or we keep our bike lanes and people start using them. So, thank you and have a nice evening.
Thank you for your comment. Jennifer?
Hi, Jennifer, from the resident of Roseville, and I just wanted to say, actually, follow up on that. I had a neighbor mention they had seen e-bikes in the aisles of Belair, so it's a widespread phenomenon. I just wanted to bring up, I did reach out to Dom, and I've reached out to Tracy today. I'm trying, and I've been reaching out to a lot of people about trying to organize a community education event around flood hazard and mitigation and watershed health. All of it, you know, is interconnected, and, you know, it's come to my awareness that this report, you all commissioned, or the Public Works commissioned a study called Kirby Creek Hazard Mitigation Study, December 2024, and basically it shows that although all the $39 million that was spent is doing a lot of good mitigation, there's still an area along Kirby Creek that is a significant flood hazard, not just the 100-year flood, but even 10-year flood events can result in severe flooding, affecting, you know, multiple homes, churches, Ike Middle School, a lot of things. And I know that when I, for instance, was presenting related to the 705 Sunrise project, the building project, and I remember Bruce saying, is that graphic real? I mean, there was a big blue blob and, you know, buildings were right in the middle of it, and in fact, it is. It is actually the current flood map, the most current map, and yes, we do have significant flood hazards. So, anyway, I'm just trying to, I've got the RCD, Placer County RCD, this watershed, Dry Creek watershed does extend outside the city, so it's actually, you know, multi-jurisdictional, it's multi-neighborhood. There's a lot of great things about this watershed, too, so we want it to be healthy. Ike Middle School, there's a lot of alternatives in this study. I just want to encourage all of you to read this study and be aware of the fact that what I'm encountering is a lot of neighbors that actually aren't interested, or, you know, realtors and property owners that are like, we don't have a flood problem, and, you know, don't really want to hear anything about flood. It's not just about flood, you know, and there is a whole series of different mitigations, but apparently there's, you know, questions about, do we have enough values at risk to justify grants and so forth? But, you know, there's interesting alternatives to look at, and the question is which ones are most, you know, ecologically friendly as well, because we also have salmon trying to, you know, get back from the ocean up here to Roseville. So, anyway, just wanted to put it on your radar, because I'll be reaching out more, but I also have, you know, watershed groups like Valley Foothill Watershed Collaborative, Dry Creek Conservancy, you know, and neighbors in the Meadow Oaks neighborhood. It turns out, you know, some of the other neighborhoods aren't as organized, so it's hard to find contacts, but I'm just reaching out, and I think there's lots of, lots of reasons to learn about that study. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment tonight? Now would be your time to come forward. We do have a second public comment at the end of the evening as well. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment, and we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Thank you. So consent calendar items are considered routine in nature and approved by a motion of our city council. An item may be pulled for further discussion from either a member of our city council, staff, or the public. At this time, we do have one request that was made by one of our council members to pull item number six, and a second request by one of the members of the public to pull item number 10 for further discussion. Are there any other items that need to be pulled? Any member of the public?
Okay. With that, Mayor, the city council will consider consent calendar items number two through five, seven through nine, 11 through 18, with items six and 10 being pulled for further discussion. May I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start off with Vice Mayor Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Haudashell.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernasconi.
Yes, thank you very much.
So item number six is the Darling Way Permit Parking Modification, Public Works, and we'll start off with our presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Bernasconi and members of the council. I'm Stephanie Keeman, your Assistant Public Works Director, and I'm here to provide some requested detail regarding this item, the Darling Way Permit Parking Modification Request. Last September, a resident reached out to the city's Traffic Engineering Group to request permit parking adjacent to their residence along the north side of Darling Way between Clarice Lane and the end of pavement where Darling Way ends at I-80. The resident requested residential permit parking 24 hours a day, seven days a week, stating that the school, daycare, and after-school activities such as soccer practices in the evenings were impacting their ability to park in front of their homes regularly and sometimes blocking residential driveways. The Roseville Municipal Code section listed on this slide provides for council-approved residential permit parking on streets where parking for other land uses impinges upon the ability of residents to find parking on a regular basis in front of or near their houses. Whenever a permit parking request is received, staff first conduct field visits to assess parking conditions within the neighborhood. If limited or no parking availability is observed consistently throughout the day, staff will typically explore other potential solutions, including coordination with our city departments and stakeholders as needed. When residential permit parking appears to be the best solution, staff will coordinate with the requister to initiate the permit parking process. For this request, staff conducted field visits on October 8th, November 4th, and December 13th at 10:00 AM, 12:00 PM, and 2:00 PM, and observed 11, 10, and 7 cars respectively parked along Darling Way. During those same field visits, staff observed that there were 51, 36, and 45 spaces available within the parking lot, the school parking lot, respectively. Based on how the school is oriented and the location of gate access, it is minimally more convenient to park along Darling Way than within the parking lot, but parking within that lot is available and the gates are accessible from that lot along a sidewalk on the south side of Darling Way. With this confirmation of the residents' expressed concerns, and also plentiful parking available within the school parking lot, staff worked with the requister to establish a proposed permit parking zone. The proposed zone is shown here. Staff performed a postcard survey of the residents who live within the limits of this proposed zone, and a follow-up postcard was sent to the residents who did not respond to the first survey. Staff actually surveyed both renters and owners of the properties, so these 10 parcels, there was 13 surveys sent. The results were two non-responses, two noes, and eight yeses, or 62% yeses of those surveys. The results were two non-responses, two noes, and eight yeses, or 62% yeses of those surveys. As that was a majority, staff is recommending that the city council adopt a resolution to approve the installation of residential permit parking on the north side of Darling Way from Clarice Lane to the eastern end of the street. And this concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any other questions you may have.
Stephanie, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Before we open it up to public comment, are there any questions of Stephanie from the council?
Do you have, Stephanie, are there very many that are 24 hours like this one here? Any? I don't know.
I don't know. I will say, there currently along this stretch, there are a couple locations of time-restricted one-hour parking, which is difficult to enforce because PD has to return multiple times. So, this will make it more simple from an enforcement perspective, also because activities at the school are
Long time.
Weekends and consistently in the evenings after, it's not just during school drop-off and pickup, it's actually daycare hours and things like that. This seems like the most appropriate for this location.
And the school usually has parking?
Just every time we were out there at different times throughout the day, on different days of the week, there was plentiful parking compared to the number of cars parked along Darling, yes.
It's just the way that it's set up, the parking lot, where the parking lot is to where probably the front entrance to the school and the childcare, that it's just a convenience factor to park on the street.
Yes, the gate is on Darling directly across from these residences, so it is more convenient to park on that side and, you know, cross the street and come into the school. There is restricted parking on the south side to allow for buses to drop off and things like that, so it works on the south side with restricted parking. People use the parking lot.
Were there noted safety issues? I mean, aside from at times maybe a driveway being blocked, but was there other, like, true safety issue in terms of visibility, or was it just that these residents did not like people parking in front of their home?
They're not able to find parking near their homes, and blocking of driveways is the safety issues that we've noted.
Okay. Okay, I asked to have this item polled, and I do have concerns about it, but I'll wait and open it up to public comment, because I don't have any other questions, unless the council has other questions.
Got a couple of questions. So, surveying in the front, that's great. Human nature being what it is, they will seek available parking on other streets. Right? So, how do we mitigate that? I mean, we had, one of my first, first community conversations, I think that was a conversation I had, was regarding Harry Crab Park, and the parking that's permitted across the street on that street. How do you, how do we mitigate, how do we guard against people just parking on streets that connect then?
Yeah, we did take a look at the map, and if you look at the aerial, because there is so much plentiful parking within the school parking lot, it doesn't seem like it would be advantageous or convenient. The convenience is really directly across the street along Darling. Parking into the neighborhood further is not more convenient than parking in the parking lot, so we don't think that would be a problem in this particular case.
Okay. I just had a question. I don't remember, I've driven back there, but not recently. Do they have a sign or anything that says parking available in back, you know, so to remind people that there's parking there?
Oh, I don't know. I don't know that there is parking, other than the parking lot in the front off of Darling, I'm not sure.
I mean, the school parking, you know, the sign, you see that sometimes in churches and things, or that they have a sign that says, "Hey, there's more in the back."
We can look at the signage to see if that would help clarify that there's additional parking on site.
My other question is, we're having a party at our house. I live on that street. What do my guests do? They don't have a permit, right?
They wouldn't have a permit. There's two permits per resident. I would say currently, there isn't available parking there anyway because of what's going on at the school, so I don't think that would be a different situation.
Yeah, but that's, that is, I think the windows that we're talking about are problematic, are pretty small windows. I mean, I think it's before school, after school, and sports, you know. I don't see it as a 24-hour problem. Do you know if the school has done any communication to parents around, you know, as parents, you know, you get notifications all the time from schools about drop-off, pickup, where to park, and do you know if police have had any sort of hand in enforcing, you know, a blocked driveway? Which it seems like blocked driveways are, you know, somebody thinks they're running in and running out, but do you know?
I don't know about the PD enforcement piece. I do know we talked with the principal of the school, who believes all of their staff are parking in the school parking lot. The resident who brought it to our attention believes that some staff are parking there all day long, so that is in conflict, but yeah.
Okay, thank you so much.
Mayor, could I make sure I understood what you said? This is a 24-hour-a-day permit parking only?
That's what's proposed. Yes, on the north side of Darling, from Clarice
Which is by the residential, not across the street.
Yes, on the residential only, yes. The restricted parking on the south side is during school hours only, so some of that parking on the south side will be open during non-hours.
I'll open up to public comment. Is there anyone who would like to comment on this item? Now would be your time to come forward.
I got three minutes?
It's fine.
Okay, so I'm Christine Farley. I live at 905 Darling Way. I was the one that initiated the study, because I can't get on my driveway today to get to this hearing. I had to ask my neighbor to come and get me, because I couldn't get out of the driveway. And I have a video of tonight. The problem is, is I've lived in the house for 26 years, okay? I've owned it for a long time. Mornings, not a problem. People drop off their kids, they're respectful. Pickup, not a problem. It's a 15-minute thing. It's the soccer practices and all the extracurricular activities that the school and the city of Roseville now has their soccer fields, like, rented out for, or whatever. So, all those people come in at like 2:30, 3 o'clock, and the last person that does it is 9:30 at night. I can't leave, so I'm calling the cops, just so you know, every day. So, before this happened, before I wanted the permit parking, I said, "I want a sign in front of my house, because I can't leave." So, the city of Roseville gave me a one-hour parking sign with an arrow in front of my driveway, so people, I could be like, "There's a one-hour sign in front of my driveway, please don't park in front of my driveway, I have to be able to leave my house." So, now I have to call the city of Roseville. I call them at least once a week, twice a week, and the cops have to come out. They're at this point now, they're like, "Hi, Ms. Farley," like, no problem. There's a one-hour parking sign in front of my house, there's a one-hour parking sign in front of 919 Darling. But they can't enforce the whole block, because it's not covered in white, the curb's not white, because there's not enough signs to tell people, "Don't park in front of this house, and don't park in front of that house." The signs are too far apart, so they can't enforce it for the city of Roseville Police Department. So, I came to the city of Roseville for help, because I can't get out of my driveway. I have a father that's ill, I have kids, and the safety issue that you talked about, I have a 14-year-old that tried to cross the street, and because there's so many cars that are parked, that when you go in front of a car, you can't see a car coming. So, he's trying to cross the street, and he can't see a car, because all the cars are parked. So, there's no relief. We have zero relief at our house, and I've lived there for 26 years. It's not like I just moved in and didn't know there was a problem. Like, it never had this problem before. The problem started about three years ago, and I've been dealing with it, and so now I have the city of Roseville trying to help me, because it is insane. I have half my street here, because we are not okay with what's going on. If it was your house, would you want to be able to get out of your driveway when you needed to? I would assume so, but that's where we're at currently, that I've done everything I could to make this happen. I've never done this before, so.
Thank you for your comment.
Okay.
Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment? Now's your time.
Hi, my name's Mama Medina. I live at 905, I mean, 995 Darling Way, and I have so many people that park in front of my gates that I can't get out. I can't get anyone in. I have a husband that's had three major heart surgeries, just the last one 30 days ago, and they block us. How am I supposed to get people in or get him out in time of need? I mean, it's got, and I've lived there eight years, but it has gotten really bad in the last three years, and it's because people don't want to use the parking lot. They would rather just park in front of our residences, because they feel that it's easier. It's more convenient. It's two more steps closer than parking four steps in the parking lot. So, please, I beg you guys to look at our situation. I mean, it is bad. It is really bad. And if you do ask them to move, you're going to get it. They will verbally lash, threaten, kick at you. It is awful. So, please, help us. We're just asking for help. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to comment on this item? Now's your time to come forward.
Name is Dennis. I live in 915. I've been there for about three years, and it's the same thing. We have two driveways in my house, and they block this. When I have pictures, you know, that I have sent and everything, and I told this guy, I said, "You know what? I'm not responsible if my daughter hits her car. She's learning how to drive." And he looked at me, but they leave trash, little bottles of whiskey or vodka and stuff like that, you know, diapers, shoes. I found shoes and everything, you know, but we try to get out, and if I, if I'm trying to get out, I have cars here, cars here, where I can't see where I'm going, and then they make U-turns there, they don't respect anybody, you know? And it's like, I told this guy, I said, "What would you do if I went to your house and I dropped trash, and I just left?" You know, that's the thing that, they're rude, some of these people are rude, you know, they don't respect your neighborhood, you know, and it's like, you try to be nice, but then you have somebody that is going to scream at you and tell you stuff, it's like, there's going to be problems, you know what I'm saying? So, it's like, you try to have respect for everybody, you know, and they don't respect your place of where you live, your residence. And that's the problem, you know, that you get there, and it's like, "Uh, where can I park? I got to park way over there, around the corner." Why? You know? It's like, if they're, they have the school there in the mornings, yeah, there's no problem, yeah. We still have problems to get out, but the people, when they come in, they try and stack each other, and it's like they're blocking half of this driveway and half of this driveway. They have a gate, the school has a gate on the very back corner where the parking lot is. If the school opened that gate, they can all park there and go to the soccer fields, instead of coming through the front of the school, where's that gate that you're talking about. That's actually for in the morning, but if they want to get into the soccer fields, why don't they go to the back corner on the left-hand side, which is like, I guess, the east side, and then in the back corner of the southeast side, there's the entrance that they have, but the school doesn't open it. But they can go from here, there's the same thing, they're going to be in the school grounds, they can go to the back and park in the parking lot and leave this area alone, because that's the problem that we have. You got trash everywhere. We can't get out, or if it's very tight to get out of my driveway, or this driveway is blocked. So, that's the problem that we're having, you know? But I appreciate your time. Thank you. Thank you for everything.
Thank you for your, thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else here tonight to make a comment on this item? Now's your time to come forward, before we close public comment. Okay, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the council for further deliberations or questions of staff. Something that has come up is, what are other alternatives that Public Works has looked at? I mean, what about, it sounds like this is a pretty disrespectful crowd, I don't know that they would follow a permit sign, but what about red curbs? Has something been, other options been explored?
So, a red curb would be no parking at any time in that location, and we no longer install them, because they're a maintenance concern.
That would be for a driveway?
Oh, okay, yes, we don't, because we have to continually paint them and maintain them, and typically, it would be an actual, like, a curb location, not a lower, depressed area for a driveway. We have, at some point, the one-hour parking was installed, as I said, that can be an enforcement issue, because you have to come back out and check that it's been the full hour, so it actually is creating, it's not as enforceable, as easily enforceable. In this particular situation, we believe this is most appropriate, because there is such plentiful parking on the school site, and that this is a convenience issue for those people parking on the, on the north side, so I'm not sure that there were other alternatives that seemed more suitable than this one.
Did you say the one-hour permit is in effect now?
There are a couple sections, as the resident stated, that they've been able to say, "In this location, in front of the driveway, or in front of my home, do not park for more than one hour." So, she'll call PD, they'll come out, but then they have to come back out again, and it's only enforceable for those small sections. This would make the entire section enforceable all the time, unless you have the placard.
Okay. Any, are there any comments from staff, from council?
Yeah, so, thank you, Mayor. So, I'm hearing two things from the residents. I'm hearing there's a daytime issue related to the school. I'm reading about a daytime issue related to the school with school employees and daycare employees. This gentleman said if they went in a different gate, can't they just, can't the school then just mandate that they park where it's required to park and not park on the street? Can we solve, I mean, can we assist them by just having that good neighbor practice from the school?
Our traffic engineering did talk with the principal, who said that that is a practice, that the school employees and principal are parking in the parking lot, so, and this also applies not just during school hours, but as I was saying, during soccer practices and things into the evenings and on weekends as well.
I'm going to need to phone a friend here with the city manager. When we had Harry Crab, we had PD drive by, we had community service, they still parked there, because the volleyball, the attractive nuisance was there. Changing human behavior is challenging, you know?
Yeah, all of what you're saying is correct, Councilman. I think kind of, a couple things come to mind, and I don't, just because I'm not aware of the programming at that field, I think my first thought is looking at the programming, and how often is it programmed? And then we have a, you know, joint use agreement with the school district, and I know one of the things we regularly did over the years is, we would have a field allocation monitor out there, one, to open gates and close gates, because several years ago, that was changed, where the school wanted more security, so gates aren't just left open, so we would assign folks to those, and so that's something that I, you know, as I sit here right now, I don't know if that's occurring or not, but I can tell you, that has been a past practice that we've done, and typically, when there is, you have a school with a park, that's why we do that, for the shared parking, but oftentimes, to your point, you have to push people there.
Yeah, people are lazy. I didn't say that out loud, did I?
That was my concern, what our city manager mentioned, because I know in the past, it was where your parking is, where the, where the activity is, and security questions were always at, you know, can, can they use that parking at night, or, you know, if there was a, you know, reason of not to. Besides, it seems I could be closer for a soccer event, and one, I've driven that with grandkids, when you finally find it someplace in another city, you know, it could, it could be closer, you just have to figure out where it's at. But it's, as far as the question about, is it, or may, the question of, can the soccer teams use that field and, and use that parking at night? Is it not a problem with security for the school, or, you know, that kind of thing?
No, I believe the parking lot is open in the evening, when they're, when the soccer is using it, they're just, it's more convenient for them on Darling.
Okay, so it is open at night?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So, I have a question. So, what's being proposed here is the 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week signage is, I'm not sure if we've done this anywhere else in the city, so I'm just, excuse me if I'm wrong, but is there a way that we could sign it where it just, you know, school and field parking prohibited, where it's not permit, but it's a sign that drives them back into the school parking lot, or that back gate that the gentleman referenced? Somehow, that sign reminds them that, whatever your slide was, 56 open parking spots at one given time on the campus versus them coming into the neighbors' curbs and blocking their driveways and the things that are causing the residents' concern. Have we tried alternate signage like that, and has that been effective?
We haven't tried alternate signage like that. I think enforcement would be challenging, because you wouldn't know if it's a residence vehicle in that location at that time, or, you know, somebody from the school parking there all day, or somebody just dropping off, that sort of thing, so especially if it were blocking a driveway, it would be challenging to enforce different signage.
But, you know, blocking a driveway is almost a mindset, because I've seen other areas, even fairgrounds or other places, there might be open spots, but they somehow migrate in front of somebody's driveway, you know? It's like, where aren't you not supposed to park? Right there. That's something that we just need to keep reminding ourselves and other people.
Councilmember Hellshell.
Yeah, just really quickly, you know, that one-hour, that Yeah, just really quickly, you know, that one-hour, that permit sign is a small green sign, easily missed. You know, I don't go into the HOV lane because there's a dollar sign associated with that. I guess this is a question for you. Can we put up a sign that's a stronger deterrent? Park here. If you park here, this is, this is what you may be charged.
Yeah, that's what I was suggesting, an alternate verbiage. Yeah.
I don't know if that's legally possible.
Like, blocking a driveway is a fine?
Right, right, just like the HOV, you know. Two people, three people, otherwise, if the motorcycle police officer pulls up and sees you're driving by yourself, you know, get out your wallet, right?
Yeah. I think just what I'm hearing from the council is that, you know, are there other options that we can be looking at? The issue that I have with this is that, you know, this is not a real novel concept, right? I mean, we see this all over our city, by our schools. I mean, there are different themes that we hear of as council members, right? Parking, speeding, traffic, you know. So, we're a city that is full of schools, and schools are places of gathering, of education, of sports, recreation, and they're meant to be good places. Now, you know, I don't know if people would adhere to a permitted sign because it sounds like they're, what's been described is pretty kind of disrespectful behavior. But I would like to see other options looked at first because I feel like 24 hours is very restrictive. I don't know if it's a red curb in front of the driveway, which isn't ideal either, but having your parking lot or having your driveway blocked isn't ideal either. You know, then it just pushes it to the other areas of the street, you know, down the street, maybe a block around. And I don't think that's necessarily fair for the neighbors. I mean, that school has been there for 70 years, and we do hear problems here and there of, around parks and, you know, people may be behaving badly. But I'm not in favor of a 24-hour, seven days a week. I would like to see us look at other options first. I feel like it's a communication and enforcement issue, you know, that we're communicating with these soccer clubs, that we're communicating, you know, with the school, and that our enforcement is on there before we go to the step of a 24-hour, seven days a week.
I have a question. Because I am concerned about the safety of people parking in front of driveways. Can they get towed if the owner calls the police out?
Yes, if they're blocking the driveway. If they get there in time, that's illegal. But I think the challenge is the call and getting people there and them getting out there in time is, and the enforcement of some of this, it's challenging. I think that going, one of the things that I would tell you, though, as we explore this, some of the things, because I'm hearing it's a soccer issue, and that's a programming issue on the city side. And I think that we could be more aggressive in our communication and putting a monitor out there and communicating with the leagues as a first step, if that's what I'm hearing. But I certainly think that there are things we can try to do on the programming side. But I will tell you, without some type of permitting, it is very challenging for enforcement. And that's...
Well, a fine does help change people's behavior. My concern is that it's setting us up for other schools, other parks, to have very restrictive parking.
Yeah, I mean, the high school, West Park, you know, I had a request for this a month ago. I was like, well, let's let this, yeah, anyway.
I think what I've heard that might be different is that the parking lot is readily available. And I've heard at some of the schools, the lots are full or not available. So, I would like to see us try to push people into that parking lot and off of the street. Whatever that takes to do that.
Yeah. Mayor, I'm with you. I'd like to explore effective options. And, you know, I'm sympathetic with the neighbors and what they, and the safety of children crossing the street, so.
I also agree with what the city manager says, and maybe working with the sport, with that, with the soccer or whatever teams are out there because, and reminding them and being strict with the kids, or the kids' parents of, you know, where to park, don't throw your trash on the ground, you know, you're out of park, you're here for a game, you're not here to trash the neighborhood.
Yeah.
I agree.
All right. Our clerk?
So, at this time, the recommended motion, sorry, the recommended motion is to adopt the ordinance on item 10, ordinance number 6997, readopting and amending chapter 16.04. I'm sorry. Oh, that was six. I'm sorry, I'm on the, I apologize. On item number six, thank you, Michelle, is the city council will consider the recommendation to adopt resolution number 25-304, approving a permit parking area, and repealing resolution number 2341. At this time, is there anyone who would like to make a motion to approve? Seeing no motion on the floor, this item does not get approved tonight, but may come back at a later time with further recommendations.
Thank you. I would like it to come back. I don't want it just to go away and the problem to continue.
And, yeah, to your point, I think we'll explore some of those options. I certainly want to engage with our Parks and Recreation Director, Jill Geller, and we'll talk through some options from that standpoint where we can be a little more proactive. And so, and just candidly, reading through this, both of us were not fully aware of all the issues, and really thought it was more geared around the school and school pickup and drop off. And so, hearing that it's really more about the program of soccer, we've done this for a long time, and we're really pretty good at problem solving these kind of issues, and we'll engage.
Yeah, we do want to get it fixed, forgotten. And, because this is happening, you know, it happens other areas, and we, let's do it, do it right and help all our people.
So, with that, if I can get a motion to move item 10 to another agenda, I'm sorry, thank you, six, I keep seeing 10. That's the next one. To move item number six to a future agenda, if I can get a motion to do that?
So moved.
Thank you. So, we have a motion on the floor. We'll do our roll call with Vice Mayor Elverd.
Yes.
Councilmember Haldishell?
Yes.
Councilmember Madonza?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuci?
Yes.
And Mayor Bernuscony.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so now we'll move on to item number 10. So, item number 10 was a request from a member of the public to have a further discussion. Item number 10 is a second reading for 2025 building standard code adoption.
Yeah, hi. I can see that most of, it's very hard to, you know, actually...
Sorry, one moment. We're going to have the presentation first, as this was, and needs to be addressed by the department directors.
Great, thank you.
And then we'll bring you up.
Good morning, council, city manager.
Good morning, already?
I didn't see you last time, Bruce. Good evening. So, this is the second reading of the 2025 building standards and codes adoption. This is something that takes place every three years. We're required by state law to adopt the fire code. This year, we have adopted all changes. The only, the changes are all grammatical, and the appendices we adopted, there's no substance change, just numbering changes.
Okay, thank you very much. Does this, council have any questions of staff before we move on to public comment? No? Okay, you can go ahead and make your comment now.
Sorry, thank you. That was very clarifying, and it would be great if, like, those comments were very helpful, if that was actually attached to the agenda. Because what I ended up seeing, trying to look at it today, was just all the citations and, you know, just all this, you know, miles and miles of code. Just in conjunction with looking at building code today, I was also just inquiring about, you know, what Americans with Disabilities Act code is there, or guidelines, or things that have to be complied with? You know, a lot of it pertaining to, you know, pathways and circulation for motorized, you know, mobility devices and things like that was part of what I was looking for. But it wasn't easy question for the building department or planning, and I still haven't, you know, heard back from that. But I guess I just want to say, you know, the reason that some of these things are important is just, you know, when there are significant substantive code changes, they usually are because of, you know, safety issues over time and lessons learned. And so, it is good things, you know, for people to, you know, if there was changes that were substantive, I would hope they'd be summarized. I guess my one other thing, because it relates to the fire code aspect, and it sounds like nothing changed, but the building sprinklers, which I believe are required, and that's a building code thing for certain kinds of buildings, this is just, you know, and, you know, something to, again, just be aware of, is that you require these sprinklers and then they go off. But there's not necessarily requirements for how to mitigate the water and the potential mold. And so, you know, I was in a building where this just happened, and, you know, it was kind of, it's just that whole part of, you know, you know, the consequences of certain things like sprinkler systems and, you know, potential mold concerns, and just having that kind of correlating, I guess, I mean, maybe that's not something that you can make building code, but it seems like that would be something related to the fire sprinklers, that it would be good to have guidance for people in, you know, managing buildings with sprinklers and condos. I mean, I had them in condos too, but, anyway, it's just, just an aspect of that. And, you know, of course, when fire is going in and inspecting, they're just basically inspecting to see if, if the water is charged, if those lines are charged, if there is water to be available for discharge. They're not able, I guess, to, you know, actually figure out if the mechanism that triggers the sprinklers, you know, the actual, whatever it is, smoke or heat or whatever the trigger is, they can't actually inspect that part of the system, which I guess that's just a comment for something, if we could figure out how to do that, that would be really helpful for these inspections. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else like to comment on this item? Okay, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the council for action or deliberation. Are we good?
I'm good, moving forward.
So, with that, tonight on item number 10, the city council will consider the recommendation to adopt ordinance number 6997, readopting and amending chapter 16.04 and chapter 16.16 of title 16 of the Roseville Municipal Code regarding buildings and constructions and the fire code. With, thank you. Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Elverd.
Yes.
Councilmember Haldishell?
Yes.
Councilmember Madonza?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuci?
Yes.
And Mayor Bernuscony.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to item 19, Water Rate Assistance Program, Roseville Municipal Code Amendment.
Good evening, Mayor Bernuscony and members of the council. My name is Brian Crakehead, Assistant Environmental Utilities Director. Here with me tonight, I have Noel Matic, our Government Relations Administrator, presenting on our proposed Water Rate Assistance Program.
Good evening, Mayor Bernuscony and council members. I'm excited to be here this evening to introduce you to our proposed Water Rate Assistance Program. While Roseville has some of the most affordable rates in the region, we've heard concerns from our customers that water and wastewater costs are increasing. This issue comes down to the rising costs to maintain and build our infrastructure, inflation, and the expense of meeting new laws and regulations. The Water Rate Assistance Program isn't new to Roseville. We offered a Water Rate Assistance Program back in the 90s, but that ended after Proposition 218 passed. Since that time, the state has elevated water affordability as a priority, and they passed the human right to water. And the State Water Board followed that with standards that say water should not exceed 2% of a household median income. It is these standards that are helping to shape statewide legislative proposals, which Roseville has been engaged in those conversations for years now. To provide you with an overview of the Water Rate Assistance Program, which we call RAP, it is designed to provide direct support to income-qualified customers. It targets the fixed charge on water bills, and it is Proposition 218 compliant by using late fees, which are considered to be non-rate revenue. It also utilizes processes to streamline implementation. It removes barriers for customers to participate and minimizes administrative costs. To qualify for the RAP program, households will need to be at or below 200% of the federal poverty level. Households that qualify for the Electric Rate Assistance Program and receive both electric and water service won't have to apply again. They'll automatically be enrolled into RAP. Depending upon available funding, a customer enrolled in RAP will receive up to a 20% discount on the fixed portion of their water bill. Every three years, customers will be asked to reaffirm they're still eligible, and just, this is very, is identical to the electric program. With city council's approval, the discount will automatically appear on bills beginning December 1st of this year. Moving to the financial considerations of implementing the program, based on current enrollment in the electric program, we anticipate 994 customers will be automatically enrolled into the RAP program. There are approximately 90 water customers that do not receive electric service, so we plan to do a targeted outreach to those households to make them aware of this new program. We are also anticipating, so we're anticipating a total of about 184 customers in the program, which would mean up to 84,000 in benefits provided in the first year. And we anticipate with rate increases, this could increase to about 106,000 by fiscal year 2030. In fiscal 2026, we have budgeted a little over 123,000, which is consistent with historical late fees that we collect for the water utility. This more than covers our program costs and provides allowances for a reduction in late fee revenues received as customers are able to pay their bill. A few benefits of RAP. First, by starting with water, we're able to pilot the program and in a manageable way. This gives us a chance to evaluate its performance and use those lessons to inform future expansions, potentially to wastewater and our waste services. RAP is also directly responsive to our customers' feedback during the recent rate case proceedings as it helps to offset rate increases by reducing costs for the households that can least afford it. Right from the start, again, we expect RAP to support at least 1,000 households, which promotes water security citywide by helping prevent shut-offs due to non-payment. And when customers are able to stay current, it strengthens the financial stability of the utility as a whole. By leveraging the eRAP processes, we are also not, we are also making it easier for our customers. It also reduces administrative costs and ensures a smooth implementation. We recently unveiled the program to the PUC, and we received their recommendation for city council to approve the implementation of the program, and we will be presenting to Sun City next week. With that, it is staff's recommendation that city council approve the creation and implementation of the Water Rate Assistance Program. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Noel. Does council have any questions of staff before we open up to public comment?
No.
Okay, is anyone here tonight to comment on this item? Now be your time to come forward. All right, we'll close public comment. Any other feedback from the council, or are we ready for a motion? I think we're ready.
Thank you. On item 19, the city council will consider the recommendation to introduce an ordinance for first reading, approving the addition to section 14.08.215 to chapter 14.08 of the Roseville Municipal Code. With that, may I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Elverd.
Yes.
Councilmember Haldishell?
Yes.
Councilmember Madonza?
Yep.
Councilmember Kuci?
Yes.
And Mayor Bernuscony.
Yes, thank you. This'll be good. Appreciate it. The next item before us is a campaign finance disclosure, Roseville Municipal Code Amendment.
Thank you. Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Bernuscony and city council. I'm Carmen Avalos, and serve as your city clerk and elections official for the city of Roseville. So, this is item 20, and it is the Campaign Finance Code Amendment. So, currently, Roseville's municipal code, section 2.60.040, defines a campaign period for any general municipal election in the city of Roseville, to mean a beginning point of nine months prior to the general municipal election for any city elected office, and ending on December 31st, which is immediately preceding such general elections. The request tonight is to amend the language so that our campaign period for the general municipal election aligns with the Fair Political Practices Commission timelines, and in addition, changes it so that we are having more consistent and clear election period cycle. So, we're requesting that the language change to indicate that January 1st of the year of the general municipal election for any elected office run from January 1st until December 31st, just preceding general election. Currently, our election cycle dates... Currently, our election cycle dates have varied based on the election date. So for example, our beginning date for the 2022 general municipal election began on February 1st and ended December 31st. Our, again, campaign period for the last election in 2024 began on February 5th and concluded on December 31st. And for our upcoming 2026 election, the beginning election period will begin on February 2nd, ending December 31st. So as you can see, the date changes again, and it's very inconsistent. In making these amendments, what we're going to be doing, and have the possibility of asserting is that we have a date definite for our election cycle. So beginning in 2026, the city's general municipal election will align with the Fair Political Practices Commission's election cycle, that being January 1st through December 31st. And it will provide, again, a date certain timeline, a clean-up to our Roseville campaign period, and allows for increased transparency in the election process for both the candidates and the public. I want to note that this does not apply to any Roseville special election or recall elections, only our general municipal elections. So tonight I am requesting that the city council introduce for a first reading an ordinance amending section 2.60.040 of chapter 2.60 of Title 2 of the Roseville Municipal Code Regarding Campaign Finance Disclosures to align with the Fair Political Practices Commission election cycle. Filing dates for all future Roseville general municipal elections will be standardized in this process. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take any council questions.
That was really helpful.
Yeah.
That'd be really nice. That's nice.
Okay, does council have any questions before we open it up to public comment?
No.
Are we good? All right. Does anyone here want to comment on this item? We will close public comment and bring it back to the council for further deliberations or a motion if we're all set. Yeah.
Okay.
This'll be good, okay.
Great.
Makes it cleaner.
On item 20, the city council will consider the recommendation to introduce for a first reading an ordinance amending section 2.60.040 of chapter 2.60 of Title 2 of the Roseville Municipal Code Regarding Campaign Finance Disclosure to align with the Fair Political Practices Commission semi-annual filing dates, and to establish clear election cycle dates for all future Roseville general municipal elections. With that, may I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Elverd.
Yes.
Councilmember Haldeshel.
Yes.
Councilmember Madonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuci.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernuscony.
Yes.
And thank you all very much for allowing us to do that.
That'll be great. Okay, for those following along, we have one more item on our agenda tonight. We have a public hearing for zoning and subdivision tolling provisions, Roseville Municipal Code Amendment. I'll open the public hearing and invite our staff to make the presentation.
Mayor and council, Mike Isomir, Development Services Director, Lauren Hawker, I'm sorry, Lauren, you're welcome.
She was gonna go with it, yeah.
I was trying to be efficient.
Lauren Hawker, senior planner.
This is a minor amendment to the zoning ordinance that deals with automatic extensions of land use entitlements that are subject, are currently subject to litigation. Lauren's gonna give the presentation, and we'll be on our way.
Thank you.
As soon as the presentation is up. So yes, these are zoning and subdivision ordinance amendments, a tolling provision, so everybody knows, is when a statute of limitation is paused, when, under specified conditions. So there are a lot of tolling provisions in existing state law, especially as it relates to housing development projects and the expiration of project approvals. Those tolling provisions are usually triggered when there are circumstances outside of an applicant's control that are going to delay the construction of the project or the effectuation of the entitlements. And the most common way that happens is when a lawsuit is filed, because during that time, that period of the lawsuit, the applicant is not in a position, most often, to be able to build the project until that's resolved, and that can take years. And during that time, their entitlement can expire, and that means they either have to file for an extension, or they have to file for a new entitlement, and those are also subject to a potential lawsuit. So the language you see on the screen and in front of you is language that would pause the expiration of entitlements if a lawsuit is filed on a project, and that would protect applicants from the unreasonable expiration of their entitlements during a timeframe when they can't effectuate those entitlements. And the resolution is proposing to have that be effective as of January 1st of this year. That is, any entitlement that was set to expire during this calendar year would be told if a lawsuit was filed. So that is my very short presentation. It's very straightforward. So the hearing notice was posted on our Kona and was published for a 20-day period in the Roseville Press Tribune, and this project is exempt from CEQA because it's policy and procedure-making. There's no physical impact on the environment as a result of these changes. So the, the project is consistent with the findings for the required, that are required for amendments of the zoning ordinance. The Planning Commission is recommending that city council approve the amendments to Title 19, the zoning ordinance, but as a reminder, Planning Commission is not an advisory body for the subdivision ordinance, so we provided them for review and comment, and the Planning Division is recommending that city council approve the amendments to Title 18, the subdivision ordinance. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available to take any questions you may have at this time.
Excellent. Great job. Does council have any questions of Lauren or Mike? No? Okay.
No, thank you.
We will open up to public comment. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. I will close public hearing, and unless council has any other deliberations, I think we're ready for a motion.
Great, thank you. So on item 21, the city council will consider the recommendation to adopt the two findings of fact and introduce the, for first reading, an ordinance amending section 19.76 of the Roseville Municipal Code to add a new section, section 19.76.140 regarding tolling provisions, and adopt the two findings of fact and introduce for a first reading an ordinance amending chapters 18.06 of the Roseville Municipal Code Regarding the Time Period of Approval. So with that, may I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Elverd.
Yes.
Councilmember Haldeshel.
Yes.
Councilmember Madonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuci.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernuscony.
Yes, thank you both very much. This'll be helpful. I did. Okay, we are at our last public comment. Public comment can be about anything that is not on the agenda. I see some very studious students in front of us. You guys have been really polite. Would you like to make any comment about anything? Now would be your time.
Yeah.
Maybe give you extra credit.
No takers? I'll, I gotta give you a chance.
We'll close this public comment and bring it back to our city attorney or city manager for any comments, and then we'll move on to the council.
I have nothing, thank you.
No further reports, mayor, thank you.
Okay, great. Councilmember Haldeshel, you wanna start us off? Any comments to share?
Sure, sure. I'm trying to write my notes here. Well, let's start off with a spectacular. The county cities had their, their dinner at Secret Ravine, and the spectacular part was Willie Duncan from Sierra College and Sheriff Wu gave a presentation on the regional planning subject. And as we were standing, as we were outside, somebody said, "There's a comet." It was actually Starlink re-entering the atmosphere, so we got, we got, we got a light show that night as part of that. Tomorrow, the SECOG Transportation Committee, the SECOG Board Meeting, a week or so ago, was held out at Bishop's. We move it around in the jurisdictions. I had an opportunity to go to the St. Vincent de Paul Dinner on Saturday night out at, at Lincoln Hills and hear from Father Boyle from Homeboy Industries and what they've been doing for a long time to help folks who are getting out of jails to get, to not go back. Placerville County Transportation Planning Agency had its meeting last week, and that's it.
Great, okay.
Okay. I wanted to just mention Will Space Health. Some of us, I know, Councilmember Haldeshel was out there with me last week. Several people from the county, Setter Health, opened up a new primary healthcare clinic with dental and maternal healthcare out at, it's in Roseville, kind of near Cattlemen, Stone, is it Stonehouse Court? Yeah, out off Taylor Road. Really, it was really kind of exciting to see what, just the facilities. That building's been used for different purposes over the years, so to see what they've done to it is, is great. Setter Health has a significant investment in helping them get the building up and running. They're gonna be opening this month, and it, I think what's exciting to me is just that it's, it's hard sometimes for residents to get affordable, access to affordable healthcare. So to see that they're gonna be offering that, and particularly dental health, I know that's, that's a need for a lot of families that don't have easy access to insurance, so anyways.
There was a councilmember Kuci reference there, wasn't there?
Yes, I think, did you?
Yeah, I was at another conference, because I, I said, of all times, they had it on another time when I was gonna be out, and I saw it when they, when they had the dedication. So it, and I'm gonna make my way over there and go see it, because they're doing wonderful things. They also are doing things for prenatal care. And the prenatal care, they're gonna have interns there, and then when, and being followed up at Setter Hospital. So it's a, it's really, yeah, and the dental, it's, it's really great.
It is great, and it's nicely located also, easy access to the hospital, so they can get primary care there and then follow-up if needed. Yeah. With Setter Health.
It's a real, really good win for Roseville and our Roseville residents.
Do you wanna share any comments, Councilmember Kuci?
Oh, Karen's turn.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought she was done.
Did you guys finish?
I think that's all I've got.
Okay.
Yeah.
How about you? Okay. Okay, it's, there's been a lot of things that have been going on for all of us, and many things at the same time, so I'm just glad there's at least five of us to, to go around and tell, tell each other about it, and they're all, and they're all really pretty good. I, I've been to, I went today to Nakwa, I actually watched a Teams meeting, but they were talking about, they're working on ways for future to, to help fish and fowl and, and open space in, here in the future in California. But they, what they did yesterday, they have, they made a new video, and it's called Flood Plane Forward, and it's very good. It really tells you simply of where we've been and, and how, how we can work with our levees and be able to provide more food for our, our animals and, and use our open space. And so it was, it was, it was good. And I also saw another Teams meeting, it was for Sights Reservoir, and what that is, is a reservoir that we've been, that we've been in a regional, region, our California, working on it for over 15 years, hoping that that's gonna come to be, but it's getting, it's getting where there's a lot of entities working on buying property, doing the environment impact. Community wants, very interested in having it because it's for, to have another capacity of water, take, take a lot of the pressure off of a full-some reservoir and being used sites. And it's not gonna happen tomorrow, but it's gonna happen in the future, and hopefully sooner than, than later. And also came back from Northern California Power Association, they had their annual conference, so they have a lot of different water or electric entities and talking about things for the future. One of them, they did talk about artificial intelligence and how you can use it, and, you know, the benefits of it, and, no, it's not your friend, but it's, you know, it's, can help you do things, you know? So that, that was quite interesting. Also, one thing we did here in Roseville, yesterday, we had a dedication of, we have two, we have two natural gas generators in Roseville. Oh, we have many, more than that, but the older ones that we have, and they're over 40 years old, and they've been here for a long time, and, and they've been used in these latter years as, use it only in, in emergency for very hot days, very cold days, anything that's happening in California to help adjust for electricity. But these 40-year-old generators are gonna have, get to take a rest. Yesterday was dedication of new ones coming in, and today they're actually being taken down. And these, you, you would see if you were out by Wood Creek, at the end of Wood Creek, looking at the landfill, they're, they're out, they're, they're in Placerville County, they're ours, but they're in Placerville County property. And soon after, these two are taken down, and there, any parts that we can use and other electric subsidiaries around us, you know, we'll share some of the parts, share the parts. But we're gonna have two new ones. They'll increase our megawatts, 20, 20 megawatts, increase capacity, but they're, they're state-of-the-art, they're, you know, they have environmental, all their environmental needs are, are good for air and, and water. They work well. We, we were lucky to work with the Department of Water Resources, and with them, we're installing and paying them together, and then by 2029, they're fully will be ours. But what this means is, you know, we are gonna be in a better place for our, their future and for our, our, our city and, and our state, because we're diversified and we have worked together as team to make things happen. So that, that's, that's exciting. Mayor Bernuscony was there, too, and seen, I remember seeing them when they were the newbies. Now they're time to take a rest, and we get the newbies. I treat them like babies. I know they're big electric generators, but they're cute.
I thought you were talking about us.
No, 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 our future generations.
Yep. Councilmember Madonza?
No specific committee updates, mayor, just two brief comments. This last Sunday, the Placerville Breast Cancer Foundation had their annual Hot Pink Fun Run. Councilmember Haldeshel was out there as well, and just wanna give a really big shout-out to our public works. They did a great job making sure that vehicles weren't coming head-on to the runners, and did a great job putting the square back together. And then just on that, today kicks off Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so if you have an opportunity this month to give your time, talent, or treasure to help someone in need or help put an end to this horrible disease, I would encourage any of you to make that effort this month. So that's all I have, mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any committee assignments to report, just several community events that I have attended, and I don't really have anything else for tonight. We will adjourn, and our next meeting will be in two weeks. It'll be October 15th, 2025. We'll adjourn the meeting, we're all finished. If you want for us to sign your papers, just fill them out beforehand, and with the name of our meeting, the time, and then we'll sign it and take any pictures you need. Okay, thank you all.